And we'll go to our, um, invocation.
Why don't you do it? You just come up.
Okay, so you want me to?
You're the best candidate.
That is frank. They're kind and gracious, God. We thank you for this opportunity and for this day. We thank you as we move forward in, in the new year of 2025. We thank you for keeping families safe and keeping our officers and our firemen safe as we work through the city. And we thank you for what you've done with the weather. We thank you for how it has helped, uh, some of our communities to get closer together, as well as us to do all we can do to help other people who are in need. We thank you especially for our staff. We ask you to keep them safe as they work through day by day. We ask you for all those things that we know that we need, and we thank you for how well you've been to us. These blessings we ask in thy name. Amen. And now we'll do the.
The President of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Okay, we have the, uh, roll call. So we're on a roll call at this time.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Russ, uh, Will Brasington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox Wyke. Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Thank you so much. And now we have the approval of the minutes from January 13th, and we've all seen them before. Any other changes, corrections? Any other changes or corrections? Okay, if not, then, then the, uh, minutes are approved as submitted. Okay, let's see. We have individuals wishing to address council. We have several. And, and please put your, uh, give us your name, your address, and then we have three minutes. Uh, Mr. Joe Farmer.
Joe Farmer, 207 Alpine Way. I'm here tonight in support of the Planning Commission, the city staff, the city engineer, and the traffic engineer. About, uh, 702 East Washington Street, an application was made for the Planning Commission to rezone this property. In the application, the applicant stated that this was one of the fir- first short-term rentals in town. On the next line, he said at the, uh, review meeting that there were no concerns. And then the very next line said all concerns were alleviated. Wants to be rezoned MX3, which is more representative of the neighborhood according to his application. But both sides, there are multiple houses that are RNXC, and across the street is RNXB. There is no MX3 except for the very rear of this property. Also, for the states that other properties would likely request MX3 if this is approved. He states that the use of this property would not change, but if rezoned, future owner in MX3 could have a bar. So why? Because this is a non-compliant short-term rental. Greenville has a lack of housing, and rezoning housing to commercial is not beneficial. This house is in the Pettigrew Historic District, and townhomes are being built nearby. People want to live in this area. We have a 2040 Plan and Development Code. Neither of them allow for this type of short-term rental. We need to stop the commercial creep, or we'll have another Whitsit Street where we have no residents. Once residents did move out of this area, but now they're returning, and we must keep residential and protect the neighbor, neighbors from commercial change. Once again, the Planning Commission, the city staff, the city engineer, and the traffic engineer all recommended denial, but yet we're back for another bite at the apple. This council must vote to deny. We need to protect the surrounding residents and encourage home ownership of these hu- houses.
Thank you so much. Uh, Justin, Mr. Justin Lo.
All right. Thanks for being here. Thanks. I want to thank you for letting me speak. Um, I like how you started with a prayer for our fire chief back here. Uh, I wanted to come and address some things about the city's new DEI initiative.
Sir, I'm sorry. Before you begin, if you could please give us your name and your, um, residential address.
Sorry.
Thank you.
My name's Justin. I live at 601 Cleveland Street. Uh, again, I wanted to address the new DI initiative, our fire chief sitting back here, I guess. Uh, I don't know if you've seen California lately, but it seems like some things could have been done differently. And it's come to my attention that you guys are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars of our tax money on a chief diversity officer. And so, the way I understand it, DEI is nothing but discrimination based on race and sex. And I don't think most of the people who live in Greenville would agree with that. It puts us in danger. You have someone who's going to dictate policies that aren't based on merit, and you're going to have, that person's going to be dictating policies for the police force, the fire department, and they're probably going to dictate policies for the Greenville Health Authority. And if the person is so radicalized that all they think about is race and sex and that's it, then maybe the Greenville Health Authority will start hiring doctors or, or dictating policies for local doctors that are going to mutilate the bodies of children. Again, I like how you started the meeting with a prayer to keep everyone safe. And so, I just wanted to really emphasize that I don't think many residents of Greenville agree with paying hundreds of thousands of dollars of our tax money to hire someone that is going to write policies that discriminate solely based on ret- say, sex and race. No one agrees with that. It's straight-up racism is what it is. And so, if you guys agree with this policy, will you raise your hand in support of it? Since everything's about pride these days, will you be proud enough to raise your hand in support of it?
We normally do not respond, um.
I know.
Just, okay.
So if, you know, however much time I have left, like I said, it's not, it's not something that many people agree with. Pretty much every single person I talk to thinks DEI is racist and sexist. And so, if you guys want to dig your own graves and have yourselves voted out, I think you should continue trying to discriminate on people based on race and sex. And not only that, put us in danger even further. I mean, prior, if you have a priority list, the priorities for the DEI officer, Bryant Davis, his priorities are to give opportunities to individuals based solely on race and sex. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next person is Mr. Clarence Thornton.
Minister Clarence Thornton. I reside at 114 Darlington Street, Greenville, South Carolina. I'm here to talk about Martin Luther King and his dream. Martin Luther King had a dream that everybody, regardless of what color your skin, black, white, red, yellow, or brown, would be treated with the same equality. Martin Luther King had a dream that everybody should be treated with dignity. Obviously, when you hear just what was just spoken, they have no sense of history. Because women were never ever treated fairly. We were never ever treated fairly. Never. We could never have jobs because we was told that we was half animals and half you, and that we wasn't qualified. Oh, it's education that needs to happen. Education. We are in a situation today because of affordable housing. That's what I was going to talk about. Martin Luther King gave his life. Jesus gave his life fighting for white people, black people, red, yellow, or brown. When you talk, call yourself a Christian, it opened the door to everybody regardless of what color you are. Jesus said, God said he sent a son to die for the whole world. The world is red, yellow, black, white, and brown. There's no discrimination. As for people to have rights, there was times when women wouldn't even be able to sit there and be a city manager. There was times when you wouldn't even be able to have an opportunity to be Mayor Pro Tim. This is a shame. This is a problem. Martin Luther King said, "History always repeats itself." Are we going to stand up with dignity and say no more to this? Or are we going to let hi- history repeat itself? They don't want to talk about the Jews, how they were mistreated. They don't want to talk about slavery, how they were mistreated. What is the good thing to talk about then? Do a Japanese child feel bad because Japan, Japan bombed Pearl Harbor? Do we talk about it? Yes. If Islam attacked the Trade Center, do we talk about it? Yes. Because it's wrong. If slavery was wrong, then why can't we talk about it? We can't pick and choose what we're going to talk about in America. If a race committed a sin against black African Americans, it happened. If Hitler committed sins against the Jews, it happened. This is America, where we're supposed to have truth and justice. America, America. We're out there, America. God, we need to really prepare for our country, and we need more affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Joanne Barr. Okay, she's not here. Okay, we will come back with her. Okay, we're moving now to our, uh, presentation from the South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association Professional Award.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and council. We are, uh, very excited tonight to have Executive Director Jim Hedley from the South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association. Jim is with us tonight to present a special award to one of our PRT staff members.
Okay.
Thank you, Will. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and council, council members, um, and staff with citizens of Greenville. Good to see you again, John.
Good to see you.
I'm here tonight to help us celebrate, um, one of city's, uh, City of Greenville's, uh, distinct and, and wonderful, um, members of your staff, um, and that's Laquan Priest. Um, Laquan Priest won our Young Professional Year Award, um, given at our annual, uh, uh, annual convention, um, in, that was happening to be in Myrtle Beach, um, this past December. Laquan has been, for those of you that don't know him, he's been at three different public parks and recreation departments across the state, um, and finally has, has landed, uh, back here, um, in his home, what we, what he considers his home. Um, and, uh, it is such a great honor to be able to, uh, give Laquan and represent Laquan with this award. For those of you that don't know him, his infectious smile, his positive, can-do attitude is something that we really need and want, and, and all of the citizens of, of Greenville ought to be proud to be able to consider Laquan as one of the people that present and, and have a job within the City of Greenville and what we do in the public parks and recreation profession. He constantly goes up and above and beyond the support of those in need, um, and that is his passion in life. Um, many of you may or may not know, Laquan graduated from Clapham University in 2012, um, and Laquan's contributions extend well beyond, um, the City of Greenville, but as mentioned earlier, um, with the other two agencies that he has worked with. He's consistently, uh, demonstrated, uh, collaboration, advocacy, and a deep dedication, uh, to our public parks and recreation field, um, across the citizens, across the cities of Greenville, Spartanburg, and then Dorchester County. Several, if you've ever talked to any one of the people that have worked with Laquan, those words, uh, keep coming back into, uh, the description of Laquan, his infectious smile, his want-to, his can-do attitude. So with this, um, Laquan did graduate our Leadership Development Program in, in 2020, but more importantly, uh, Laquan is married to Stacia. Um, they have a wonderful, uh, baby boy who is in the back of the room at this point, Gabriel, um, who actually steals the show from Laquan, believe it or not. Uh, if there's somebody that can steal the show, uh, Gabriel's found that, found that niche. So with that, I would like to represent, um, the 2024 Young Professional Year Award to Laquan Priest for outstanding contributions, leadership, and dedication, dedication to the public parks and recreation profession given this day, December 4th, 2024.
Okay, Laquan. Let the baby steal the show. Hey, Laquan, go get the baby. Laquan, go get the baby. Let that little sweet baby steal the show. Did you have any remarks? Would you like to say, Laquan? Come on. Come on, I know it's driving you crazy now.
No, I do want to, uh, thank the, the City of Greenville. Um, um, I'm, like, I don't know if some of you know, Greenville was the first job I ever had as an adult. Um, I graduated at Clapham in 2012 in May, and I started with the City of Greenville in October of that year. Um, part-time, $12 an hour. I still have my offer sheet from the City of Greenville.
All right.
Um, I moved to Greenville on a hope and a prayer. Um, Ms. Jones, I'm trying to. Um, she taught me a lot about this profession, and, uh, she has been a second mother to me because I moved up here without a car. I didn't have a place to live. She helped me find a place to live and helped me find a car. And, um, 10 years later, you know, I'm still doing a profession that I love, and, um, let's thank Octavia Jones. So thank you so much for pointing the name of Ms. Jones. It's tough now because she trained me, and now I'm her supervisor, so that's, um. But thank y'all so much.
Congratulations. Rick, y'all make sure y'all, y'all take pictures of Laquan. Congratulations. We're so very proud of you. So very proud. And next we will have, uh, on our agenda, we have a public hearing? Uh, no, okay. Recognition and appointment, we don't have any of these. All right, now we're going to move to the consent agenda. We're trying to, we have some wonderful things coming, but we're going to have to wait, so.
Motion to approve. Thank you.
A motion to approve in a second.
Thank you.
All right. All of the, okay, call the roll.
Uh, Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. All right, so consent agenda is approved. We go to our regular agenda. Uh, we don't have any, I've finished business, uh, first readings.
15A, an ordinance to annex approximately 0.68 acre of real property and 0.29 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at Timber, uh, 2 Timberlake Drive and to provide the zoning designation of RHB.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And you have any great news you want to give us?
But.
Anybody having?
I do have a comment. We're, that, that home is in kind of the, getting into the McCarter neighborhood, isn't it?
Yes, uh, Councilmember DeWorke. And it's, if you know where the back entrance to Publics is, it's across the street from there on Pelham.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Clerk, we call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington. Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. All right, oh, this is passed for that. 15B.
An ordinance to annex approximately 9.22 a, uh, acres of real property at 2435 East North Street and to provide the zoning designation of BG. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Some questions?
I just, do we have the names of the businesses that, do you have them offhand or no? If you don't, that's fine.
The UFC gym on the left in the larger space, um, there's an empty space, and there's a nail salon, Oscar Nails, uh, but the big one is Sprouts.
Yep.
Of course, that was the old Bylow. So we're thrilled to get Sprouts into the city. Um, there is a Mexican restaurant. There's a UPS store. Um, there is a new Peruvian restaurant going in, so lots of energy and excitement.
Big deal, right?
Yes, we're excited.
That's the investors. Awesome.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? Uh, it's clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. Okay, item 15C.
An ordinance to rezone approximately 0.271 acre of real property located at 702 East Washington Street from RNX-X to MX3.
So moved.
Second.
This is one of the. I'd like to have a conversation about.
Yes, we're not voting just yet. It's just.
Okay. Okay. Could you give us a little update on this, please?
Mayor Pro Tim and council, uh, this has been to the Planning Commission, and also it went to our project preview meeting, so we were able to garner some feedback from the community. And both the staff and the Planning Commission, after much discussion and we toured, we went to the property and saw the context, we really felt like MX3 was not appropriate here and for a variety of reasons, but as you know, uses such as bars or nightclubs are permitted, brew pubs, uh, drive-throughs with special exception. So staff and Planning Commission, uh, came to the conclusion that this was not appropriate. And as you know, MX is the district, um, the lowest district that would allow for a short-term rental. They can still have rentals there 30 days or more. It's just not the nightly rentals.
Okay.
This is also, given that the PC denied it, the first we've had, I think, on the docket where it would take a two-thirds majority to pass.
Right.
Mayor, I, I've got a, uh, preliminary question.
Yes.
If, uh, let's say hypothetically, we all were probably going to vote this down.
Okay.
Would we have had the option of no one, uh, motion, uh, mo- making a motion or seconding? We could have just, if, if, I have no idea where people's votes are, but if no one wanted to do it, we could have easily just, uh.
Never, never, never considered it.
If no one makes the motion and no one seconds it, we don't have a motion.
I don't, I don't know about that.
Yes, it does. Done in advance. I've seen it done.
Where's our parliamentarian?
Mayor Douglas, what were the reasons for denial?
Well, basically, it wasn't compatible with the neighborhood, and we heard during the zoning rewrite loud and clear from Pettigrew that they did not want, um, short-term rentals in the neighborhood, and so RNXC was by design.
Okay.
So our, our expert, uh, Camilla Clark. Camilla, what would be the answer to my question?
In this case, you could have made no motion and no second whatsoever, and it would have died.
Okay.
Okay? Or in this case, you could have made the, do you make the, and that's my question with council. I have Councilmember Stahl making a motion and Council, uh, Member Dow making the second. Is that for discussion to bring it to the table?
Right.
Good.
And that was my belief that, that it was to bring it to the table for further discussion.
All right.
Is the applicant here?
No.
I do not see Mr. Thacker.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So.
Clerk, we call the roll.
So in this case, or if you are voting yea, that is for it. If you are voting nay, that is to deny the agenda item. Councilmember DeWorke.
No.
Councilmember Gibson.
No.
Councilmember Brasington.
No.
Councilmember Stahl.
No.
Councilmember Dow.
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
No.
Thank you.
That particular item is declined. We'll go to our next item.
Mayor Pro Tim, could you pull the microphone down, please?
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, 15D.
15D, an ordinance to rezone approximately 0.115 acre of real property located at 101 Pine Street from RHD to RNA.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving properly. Second, um, okay, give, can you give us an update on this one?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, this request is to rezone, uh, to RNA, two and a half stories, which is the same height as the current zoning of RHD. Previously, under the land management ordinance, this property was zone RM1, so it was multifamily then. Um, there's a variety of housing types in this area, from the Mulberry Court Apartments across the street to a mix of single-family houses, duplexes, and apartments, as I mentioned. But staff and planning commission both felt that it was appropriate for the neighborhood.
Okay. And there's some plans for this particular?
Yes, we are excited to be working with Sheila Dogen, um, of Beyond Housing and, uh, working on some affordable housing here in the form of duplexes.
That's wonderful. Okay, any other questions?
Mayor Douglas, do you have any idea on her timing for this? Are they ready to go?
Ready to go.
Okay, good.
Yes, and, and normally, uh, they work with, uh, low income, low. They work in the 30 and the 40% range as well, so that's exciting. Okay, clerk, we call the roll.
Okay. Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. Set her, uh, Ms. Butler, if you would come down front. Come, come on down front. She tried to sneak in, but it's not.
You're fine.
Okay. All right, 15E.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville and incorporate text updates into the Greenville Development Code recommended during the 18-month review, code review process. So moved.
Second.
So moving properly. Second, any discussion of questions?
Mayor Douglas, I appreciate adding the high, medium, and lows on the use tables.
We do too. We, it will be very small-business friendly, and so we're thrilled about that. We looked at peer cities, case studies, and we chose, um, Asheville's and Raleigh's models. So these are modeled after those cities, and we just want to make sure that our code is working for the Greenville community, and so we, um, did not require an 18-month update, but we felt like there was enough that we wanted to come back and tweak. So, um, I just want to thank Ross Solinsky and the entire planning staff, many of who are here, uh, who worked through the process to, to bring these updates. We're excited about them.
Madam, Mayor Pro Tim, if I may, just to, just to piggyback on what Mayor Douglas just said, I want to take just a brief moment to commend the planning staff and anybody involved, those in the public as well, for these periodic review processes. On this one in particular, I, I received several calls commending, you know, the, the approach, continued approach of the city and making sure that we're getting it right and fine-tuning where necessary, and specifically a couple ones that were, um, deemed to be, um, enhancements advantageous to, to those it was intended to benefit. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. And another few quick highlights. We removed parking maximums for churches, which made sense to us. We clarified, uh, that garages applies to things like carports and porter curchers that we're seeing a lot of. Um, we're thrilled with a high-impact frontage screen along 385 and 85, so we will maintain the green in Greenville as you're coming into the city. Uh, trees will be required as well as buffers. And let's see, there's just a lot in here. We also removed the 90-day demolition notice to 45 because we heard that maybe 90 was too much, and previously it was 30, so we're adjusting as we're hearing feedback. But, um, uh, anyway, there, there are a number of different things in here. We also removed a long-term bicycle parking for some of the uses that may be, uh, like an industrial use, for example, so things that we heard from the community.
Okay, that's, that's wonderful. Anybody have any other questions? Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay, clerk, we call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington. Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. And so the item 15F is passed. Let's go to 15G.
Uh, we are going to, uh, 15F next.
Oh, F.
Yes, ma'am. An ordinance to modify the existing, the Alliance Plan Development District located on Lawrence Road and Ackley Road. So moved.
Second.
I do have some questions.
All right, questions?
So I, I just want to make sure it's clearly stated in public. This is a long, probably been, this is since you and I came up here. We've worked on this, and I see Jessica Cass is here, representing NHE, and James Jordan is back there. Um, that, that the reduction in units is driven by the restrictions from SC Housing.
Mm-hmm.
The overseer.
SC Housing, the overseer of Lytech Projects, that it has a maximum of hundred units available. It was not that Greenville would want fewer units in there, um, it's capped at that because of the tax credits. I did have a question, I, I, I missed the conversation, and that is perfectly fine, it might take Joseph coming up. At one point in, at conception, we were talking about underground stormwater collection in the parking lot. We're now at a stormwater detention pond right close to the Haley Court cul-de-sac, and you've heard Ken and I, councilmember Gibson and I, talk many times about the concerns of flooding there. I guess, in, in a nutshell, what drove that, was it money that, that put us there, finance on it, yes?
It, it, two things, one, um, the reduction of surface parking, um, previously with the number of units we had and the additional square footage for the commercial space, code drove a need for more parking, with the reduction of some of that commercial space and some of the units, there was a need for less parking. Less parking, more surface area, we could move it from being underground, under that parking, to above ground, uh, but also financial feasibility, you know, with these, uh, developments, it's tough to reach financial feasibility, and, uh, underground stormwater detention is very expensive, um, there's also rock on the site, and so the deeper we go, the more we'd have to blast and do other things to contend with that rock, um, you know, so for that feasibility, and, and also, and this is, it'd be tough to get an engineer to say this, but you know, underground stormwater is like long-term, you know, cleaning, maintenance, it's, it's underground, so you know, above ground, you can, you can clean it, you can maintain it, you can monitor it, um, so just a variety of, um, you know, practical reasons more so than anything.
It would be get, uh, tough to get an engineer to say that.
Yeah.
Around the pond, does our code, I hope this is a, a yes, but, um, I'm concerned about having the pond there with kids playing, we have fencing around it, I assume that's part of the code.
Yes, they have safety fence.
Okay, all right, and just again to reiterate, we are very, very aware of flooding concerns from Haley Court, just want that always part of the conversation.
And, and I'll just say to that, I mean, right now, you basically have three point eight acres just draining, just, everything just drains.
It should get better.
Yeah, right now, uh, if you look at the map, I mean, the, the surface topo just all heads in that direction, so everything from Ackley, everything from Lawrence that hits that site, it just drains without any control, anything stopping it, you know, what we're going to do is anything that falls on our site will get captured in our stormwater system, that'll collect it, that'll capture it, that'll hold it, and release it slowly and carefully, so it should be a net improvement, um, to, uh, the surrounding neighbors.
That's wonderful. That's so wonderful. Any other comments or questions?
Uh, no, I just, just, I'm, I'm really happy this project is proceeding, I mean, I, I, you know, I wish we had the, the, the units, all the units that we talked about before, but, but a hundred units of that AMI, um, in, in my neighborhood and in my district is, is going to be a very, very welcome thing for the city, for the district, um, so, you know, great job to all of you, um, and, and, um, I look forward to, uh, looking forward to the ribbon cutting.
Clerk, we call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye, and item passed, so now, now we'll finally go to fifteen G that I was so anxiously rushing to get to.
And that is an ordinance to appropriate one million in the wastewater fund for grant funds received from Greenville Water for South Downtown Sewer Improvements.
So moved.
Oh, yes.
Second.
All right, any questions, comments? Oh, this is one, that's why I was rushing, sewer water, talk about, ooh, wastewater, thank you, all right, clerk, we call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye, and item fifteen G is passed, item sixteen A.
A resolution to provide for certain certifications regarding an abandoned building site located at or near seven hundred Arlington Avenue, according to the South Carolina Code annotated twelve dash sixty-seven dash a hundred at SEC.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, you wanted to say something, too bad. These people are ready. I'm just, but no, if there's anything you feel you want to add, just go right here.
No, we can, it's a great project.
Oh, all right, all right, y'all, we moving on, okay, clerk, we call a roll. Uh, resolution?
Voice call.
The resolution, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You're not here, okay, thank you. Items, okay, next item.
Yes, ma'am, and before we call the actual next item, we do have a video that, that our communications department has put together, that we'd like to present at this time on behalf of Ruth Ann Butler.
Ladies and gentlemen, that was our resident, Ms. Ruth Ann Butler, her services were, were here, um, at, um, her home church, Allen Temple, and we have some information that we are very proud to bring forth, it's going to be, uh, historical as well, so the clerk will give us an information.
Item sixteen B, a resolution in recognition of Ruth Ann Butler for her service and dedication to the City of Greenville.
Is there motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is it moving properly, second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yes.
And we have family. Always got that.
I guess you heard that song.
Did you have a resolution to send brains for your family, if you would come up and join councilmember planning?
And the rest of you.
Do you want us all?
Yes.
Cause we all at the funeral party. Ms. Ruth Ann, it shows it, Ruth, for the babies. But before we do this, I want to say. The family, she is the FBI agent of green. It's, uh, I said anything, if you're looking for something, I'm trying to look at the film, I said, I'm voting Camilla, honey, she got, and anyway, this resolution, um, is going to be forever, okay, grab here, so now, all of the family will count with the whole team.
All right, y'all.
And, uh, all the other will get into the, we gonna fly about three thousand. Anyways, and we thank you for allowing us to do this resolution, we haven't done very many, we haven't had very many people like this Ruth Ann Butler, not very many, but, I mean, thank you, Mr. Jordan, are you here? Could you come up, please? Jordan is going to preserve this site, so that we will have a wonderful, uh, site, uh, dedicated to this family and to the community, we have a great African-American history, we dream. And anybody else who just want to come, thank you. Thank you, that matter, for, come on. Now, our communication, she said, had both victims, and then, uh, now we're gonna have to task the mayor to this, he had, he had. All right. Thank you, thank you. It's about every game, right? Have anything anywhere.
Thank you, change. I got so. Give me a couple minutes. Oh, you have things to do. Thank you, God, thank God. I must say that we are so happy and so proud, so grateful for the things that you are doing, and we just haven't had over years, but today is very special, all my kids, thanks to all of you, and to many things. The best in there, have the most, and I just want to say, with somebody that's mine, somebody being, I'm like, sharing you all about it, okay, I just said, I was on this, and she was giving my best. I'm saying, this, this baby eyes, she say, cut the bones, baby slaves, no, no, she's been kicking every step. That's sweet. Yes, ma'am. Just right on, it is secret, pretty damn, and then, sent out from the chambers of the city house. Yes, yes, right, because she said she came and she was not even on the agenda, and she had her dad's, and come up here to the electric, and after she presented her dream of this Greenville Cultural Exchange Center, I think male workman was serving that one.
Yes.
And they said, we are going to adopt and support you, and from that point on, in the hospital, Ruth Ann was saying, oh, well, let's go, with all the feelings connected to, she said, let's go, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Camilla, so much, all right, city manager.
Nothing to report tonight.
Oh, really? You don't have any little sneaky stuff on somebody? Okay, so everybody got a job, tomorrow, good, all right, any comments, questions, are we adjourned, go home, have a good day.